Okay. Bye.
We can reconvene our meeting to open session. The board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a contractual matter, a legal matter, and for tenure candidates. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as it is.
Introductions.
You're first.
Meredith Mariotti, Wendy Sampson, Catherine Natto, Jody Monroe, Holly Donnall, Christine Beck, Willow Bear.
Jonathan Fishbein.
And Judy Kehoe. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the December 15th, 2021, regular board meeting.
So move second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Next, our meeting reports. And first is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I wanted to provide a few updates regarding our COVID protocols. So we are live streaming our classes, K-12. We started elementary today due to the number, large number of students that we currently do have absent. So we'll continue to monitor how everything is going. Staffing is a little bit of a challenge, but we're working hard to make sure that we remain open. I also wanted to share our vaccination rates as of December 23rd for our students. Sorry. Our high school is at 90%. This is fully vaccinated. Middle school in grade seven and eight, we're at 87%. Grade six, we're at 70%. And elementary, we're anywhere between 40 and 68%. And that was, had received their first dose, but many have actually received both doses. And again, this would be for the holiday break, so we are still getting information from parents for students who were vaccinated over the break. So we'll continue to monitor that. Also regarding testing, we did have distribution for the home kits that New York State provided on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. We did just receive more kits today, so we will be able to offer a kit to any family who didn't get one. We're holding a pickup at Eagle Elementary on Monday, January 10th, between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. So we will send something out, but we'll offer that for any family who wasn't able to pick up. And they'll be given a test for their child. We do still have limited supplies. We don't have enough for everybody, so hopefully only those who need it will come. And we do have kits in the district that we will have on hand for any students who are symptomatic or families who are struggling to get a test. We are also expecting CDC and New York State updated guidance soon, so we will continue to monitor that. We are looking to offer a parent forum at some point. Right now, it just seems so many things are changing, so we'd like to see what the new guidance might be, and then we'll offer something. At this point, I'd like to introduce a couple of people. Jennifer Spiesler is our, here she is, she is our going, she's on the board agenda tonight to be our new elementary assistant principal. So I wanted to kind of put a face, at least eyes and above, for Jennifer to meet the board. So I don't know, Jennifer, you want to come up to the mic and just, you know, give your 20-minute speech? Just getting a little bit about yourself, maybe?
Hi, everyone. Just a quick flash of my face. Hi. How are you? It's great to meet everyone. Happy to be here tonight. Thrilled to be joining Bethlehem team, and I'm very excited to get to work. So I believe I will be attending the next board meeting to help with the presentation for multi-tiered systems of support and how that will be implemented at the elementary level. So that's it. I'm very excited. I'm coming to you from a long teaching career. I began in Albany City School District and taught there for eight years, and I have been working in South Colony for the past 15 years as a teacher. I've taught most grades in the, at the elementary level, except for kindergarten. That's really for the very brave.
I agree.
Yes, it is. But I'm really excited to join the team and be a part of teaching and learning as we go on forward. So it's great to meet you, and thank you.
Welcome.
And welcome.
Welcome.
When we told Jennifer about the appointment, we said, oh, we're having an MTSS presentation at the next meeting, so you're up. So you get to know a little bit more of our next meeting, so welcome. And finally, I'd like to recognize one of our students. Henry Reichman is in the audience tonight, and he is a junior, and he is about to spend time with the President of the United States, members of Congress, and a Justice of the Supreme Court as part of the National Scholarship and Leadership Program known as the United States Senate Youth Program. It's an extremely competitive merit-based program for high school students who are interested in pursuing careers in public service. Two delegates from every state in the nation are selected to visit the nation's capital in March for a week-long education program, and they're each awarded a $10,000 scholarship to be used at a college or university. So according to Mr. Petracioni, who is our social studies supervisor, Henry is one of a handful of Capital Region students to be selected in its 60-year history, and he is the second individual for Bethlehem since 2012, so we're very proud of him. And Henry, I don't know if you want to say a couple of things, so the board can hear a little bit about you.
Yeah. Is my phone?
Yeah.
Thank you so much for inviting me, giving me the opportunity to see all of you. Thank you so much for telling that. That was really great. So yeah, overall, it's something I'm really looking forward to. I've been really happy and lucky to have the support of Mr. Petracioni, as you noted, who's just been an incredible guide and advisor for me in this process. Mr. Domel, who's supported me as well and helped me fill out a lot of paperwork in the application, that's been great. And also, my social studies teacher, Mrs. Krishna, who wrote my letter of recommendation, has been a really good supporter and mentor for me throughout all my high school career. So yeah, I'm really excited for the program, to see how it goes. Politics has been my passion for seven or eight years, and it's really going to be a good experience to match up and meet a lot of really cool high schoolers from across the nation who share those similar interests. And yeah, I'm super excited for a lot of those reasons, and it's going to be a fantastic week, and I thank you so much for having me here.
I heard you kept Mr. Domel up really late at night getting a signature.
Yes. There was an episode in which I needed a signature at a certain point of time, and he offered for me to come over to his house at 10:00 p.m. To get that. So yes, a double thanks, Mr. Domel, for that, for that situation.
Can I ask you a quick question? How did you hear about this? Like, is it something that the whole social studies department is, it's known, or is it something that you knew about? Like, how did you hear about it?
Yeah, so I know of it. I also have a position in the New York High School Democrats administration, and I have friends from across the nation. I think I have a friend in Oregon who did it last year. So kind of just being in those kind of connections and those kind of circles. Yeah, and I think I got an email from my guidance counselor, like, hey, I think you would be a good fit for this. So I was like, of course, this sounds great. So yeah, it was a long application process, but I really enjoyed it.
Perfect. Great.
Thanks so much.
Exciting.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thanks again, yeah.
And that concludes my report. Anybody have any questions for Jody?
I did, actually. I wanted to ask about the live streaming in the elementary schools, which I think, as I said before, is, I hate that we're here, but I think that it's, it's time, and I'm glad that we're making that available. Is it limited to students who are out with documented COVID or quarantine, or have we thought about allowing some, I know this is not a popular topic, but allowing some amount of sort of parent choice for kids that they know are particularly vulnerable while we're in this surge?
So we're, we extended the criteria. We were doing tutoring just for COVID-positive or kids in quarantine. In this situation, because we have kids who are out with symptoms, or they're waiting tests or test results, we also extended it to those individuals as well, which is in part why we have higher numbers of students out currently, because it's taking quite a long time for people to get a test or get their test results. So it is extended to that group of students as well. And we're trying, we're monitoring, obviously, who's in quarantine, who's positive, and who's out for symptoms. Our nurses are doing a great job of keeping track of that, but that, those are the groups of students that are eligible to participate in the remote option.
Okay. Thanks. Catherine, did you?
And I was just wondering, on COVID prevention stuff, can you speak to or just remind folks of masking and the, just kind of what the district's approach is on this and how, how serious it is?
So we did ask staff to remind students about proper mask wearing. The students really have been quite good. I know that at times, the mask falls down or they come down, but overall, the kids have really been good, and our staff have been good about just quick reminders. We haven't really had any significant discipline issues. No one's refusing to wear masks, so we do the best we can social, you know, we are socially distanced. We're fortunate that in our spaces, we've been able to keep our students six feet apart for lunches when they don't have masks on, and that has made a big difference in kids having to quarantine. So we're continuing to do that. I don't know if you looked in the foyer, the bench out there is taped off again, because that was an area where kids were sitting closer. So for the time being, some of those things are off limits, but hopefully it will be short-term. Yeah.
Jody, I've seen in the newspaper, not pictures of our sports teams, but of others, where the masks are completely off the face.
Yep.
You know, and close contact. And are we taking any extra steps to support, protect our sports teams?
So I know that, I spoke with our athletic director, Mr. Keys, before actually the vacation, and the athletic directors in this suburban council had talked to their coaches, reminding them the importance of keeping masks up, wearing them appropriately. Obviously, when you're running down a basketball court, it tends to slip, but when they're way down by your chin, that's not slipping, that's pulling them down. So they were, at least the majority of the teams we play, were asked to remind coaches. I know the officials spoke to all the schools, as well as officials' organization, saying, please make sure the coaches are enforcing or reinforcing mask wearing. So, you know, you do the best you can. Wrestling is tough, obviously, but when the kids are not wrestling, when they're on the benches, and swimming, when they're on the deck, they're all wearing masks, so.
Jody, you mentioned, you know, that there are staffing challenges, and we've all seen the emails with the increasing numbers. At what point do you see the staffing becoming such an issue that we would have to go remote? Are we very close to that point, or do we have enough substitutes?
What's the threshold?
Yeah. I can't say we have a number. It's kind of day by day. I mean, today, we're okay. We're managing, and as some staff are going out, others are coming back. But that could all change tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll get past this hump, and we'll be able to manage it. We did get extra subs, although subs are in very short supply, that other teachers who are here are stepping up and picking up classes, which has been a tremendous help. I know our administrators are covering classes, so hopefully we'll avoid any kind of, you know, fully remote option. We are working with transportation on if we have a big staffing shortage in transportation, which we already have a shortage on. What would that look like for getting kids to school? Can we get all kids to school? Are we only able to get some of our kids in school? We, again, we would prioritize elementary over secondary, because secondary has done remote. So I can't say we have an exact number in mind, but right now, we're managing.
And I know there was recently a change in how the district is going, how the district is communicating cases? Could you just speak to that for a minute and remind people?
Sure. So we, our plan was after the holiday break to start doing updates weekly, but we've had so many cases over the holiday break, and we're still getting cases from the holiday break. We ended up doing updates, we did one today, to cover yesterday and today, and we did one Monday. So moving forward, our goal is to do a weekly update, because I think people are getting tired of those messages, so we're trying to group them together to give people an idea of, here's what our counts are, but not do the daily. Anyone who has been in close contact, though, with an exposure is being notified the day it happens.
I had a quick question on service providers, those that are giving services OT speech. Are they able to keep their distance, the six feet? Because having friends in that realm, it doesn't seem like that's always the case.
Right.
And at this high point, I'm concerned for, like, our staff that might not be able to do the social distance, like, how are we addressing it?
So in most cases, they can keep six feet or at least three feet, and they're, they're not in sustained contact during the high transmission. Obviously, people are being extra cautious. Some of them have additional precautions with masking or the shields as well, if they're in close contact with kids. So they do their best, but they are working with kids with intensive needs or some younger children, so it's not always possible, but generally, they're trying to adhere to those guidelines.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Next up is the board report. I don't have much. I just wanted to wish everyone a happy 2022, and say a thank you to our teachers and staff, and especially our nurses, because I know this has been a rough few days returning after the break, and even with the break, I know everybody probably still feels exhausted, and I just want to recognize that and express our gratitude to everybody for all their hard work. Does anyone else have anything they wanted to add or share? All right, next up are our student reports. Do we have anyone from the high school senate? Yeah? No? Okay. All right. I think we have a couple of people here from the middle school student council. If you guys want to come up to the microphone. And if you want someone to help you adjust that microphone.
Hi, my name is Maxine Lee, and I am in sixth grade Mohawk.
My name is Phoebe Donnall, and I'm in sixth grade on Hudson. Some student council updates, and our food donations for the Holiday Caring and Sharing Program exceeded what we collected each of the last two years, and we would like to, again, like to thank all of our community members who made donations. We would also like to thank all of the middle school students who participated in our spirit days prior to vacation. The ugly sweaters and sweatshirts were awesome.
Mohammed Ali won our most recent December Character Hero of the Month vote in a knockout victory. His quote was, "Inside of a ring or out, ain't nothing wrong with going down, but staying down, that's wrong."
Our band, chorus, and orchestra are getting ready for their upcoming performance, and we thank the teachers, staff, and school leaders for setting up a safe environment for them to perform.
Our BCMS musical production of The Little Mermaid continues, and we look forward to another great show.
The middle school just opened up the online web store for parents to order character t-shirts.
Stage Creations just announced the title of this year's play and its murder in the House of Horror. Dates of their performances will be shared at an upcoming meeting.
We would lastly like to thank the members of the Board of Education and Central Administration for all of your work to support our students, staff, and community. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you guys, too.
I'm just a little biased.
And next on our agenda is our presentation this evening, and we're having a transportation update by Dr. Hurst, Ms. Kehoe, and Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we're going to give you yet another transportation update, following up on our last presentation to you on November 17th. We had talked about some of the concepts that we were looking at, trying to address the recent challenges that we have been experiencing relative to our staffing levels of bus drivers. We did take the feedback that you had given to us at the last meeting, and tonight, we want to just give you that latest information and recommendations, and continue our process of getting your feedback. Our theme here really is our transparent communications. This is truly a difficult issue that we've been devoting a lot of time and effort to trying to come up with the best possible solution in a difficult situation relative to the shortage of drivers. We've talked about how this is a national issue. You see it regularly on the news where there is just, I think it's going to be a very long-term concern for the district. The labor market is really straining with the supply and demand issues. It is really difficult to become qualified, to become a bus driver. It takes a lot of time and training in order to get your CDL and to meet all of the, both the federal and the state requirements. The work schedules continue to be a challenge, because it doesn't typically fit into a traditional working day schedule. Recall that we were at roughly 87 drivers about two years ago, and we are down to 59 drivers, plus or minus, at the moment. So our proposed solution, there is no one magic answer to this problem. We really have three areas that we're focusing on, and those are the areas that we're going to give you the update on this evening. The first one is to make sure that we are in a competitive position within the regional labor market, and we, tonight on the agenda, you will be asked to approve the memorandum of agreement with our bargaining units that will hopefully adequately address the driver compensation issue. We also will have Mr. Johnson talk about the student eligibility for transportation and some changes that we are considering for that. And then lastly, the third phase of this answer, or to the issue, is to potentially update the bell times if we still continue to have shortages of our staff. You'll note that we've broken this out into a three-year timeline. It's really a phased approach that we're contemplating. So the driver compensation will be addressed now, in this year, and then we're looking at our eligibility thresholds for the coming school year, and then, if need be, we'll do the bell times in the following year. So we have been engaged in discussions with BCUEA for the better part of this last year, really trying to partner with them and collaboratively identify a way to address the compensation concerns within this current labor market. So we believe that with the approval of this MOA tonight, we will have attained a win-win for the district's operations and our ability to well-serve the needs of our students, as well as for the staff who have, under difficult circumstances, and very ably fulfilled these roles for the district. So this was a very different form of negotiations, because we had to address these employee concerns in this tight labor market. So while we started the process talking about increasing driver pay, we realized that we had broader issues besides just our drivers, so we tried to address those concerns within this total package. So for instance, we were also struggling to hire and retain our food service staff. We were facing challenges with the rising minimum wage, and we needed to make sure that we were compliant with that as well. And we also had variances in pay between employees who have been here longer versus the newer staff, so we tried to address that as well with the terms of this MOA. So one of the other things that we did was we have extended this contract one additional year. The current five-year contract was set to expire in June of 2023, so we have added one additional year to that contract, and there is a 4% salary increase scheduled, that's step plus the cost of living increase in that final year of the contract. So the highlight of the contract is the work that we have done with the driver pay. So our starting pay had been $19.67 per hour, and that was not enough to be attracting drivers. We have, the MOA provides for $23.60 per hour. This applies to the newest drivers who are on that lower pay scale. So what it translates into is roughly $4,000 a year for about 24 drivers who are on this newer pay schedule. And that does put us to one of the highest rates in the region, at least as of now, so we are hoping that that will make a difference in making us attractive to hiring drivers. And the other thing that we did was, as of January 2022, with the effective date of this, is we have established a six-hour minimum for most driving positions, and that's what we heard, for drivers to be able to have a living salary, they needed to have a guarantee and some stability in their overall hours. There is a provision in the MOA where if a driver wants fewer hours, that can, and it meets our needs as well, we can accommodate that as well. We certainly didn't want to be in a position of turning away drivers if they were only available to work fewer hours. We have put in a $600 referral bonus, so if any member refers a driver to us and they stay with us for a six-month period, there's a $600 bonus. So hopefully, it's kind of like a friends and family plan, where we'll have some referrals of some good candidates. And we also have a $1,000 retention bonus for new drivers after they have stayed with us for one year. So hopefully, that will help us with recruiting and retention of our bus drivers. We do have some increases for the other staff, as I had noted. Some of those increases are effective in this current year. Others, for the employees who are on the higher pay scale, there is no increase this year. There was a slight bump up in next year's scheduled salaries. So we're thrilled that we have a contract. BCUEA had ratified it with their membership on December 20th, just before the December break, and with your approval of the MOA tonight, we hope that we will have been able to check off the first focus of our solution here for addressing the driver shortages. Are there any questions on that piece of it? And if not, I will turn it over to Karim Johnson to talk about the eligibility thresholds.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. It's had, it's been a while since the walk zones have been reviewed. The last change was in 2010, when the high school walking distance was increased from a half a mile to the current one-mile threshold. We fully understand that the walk zones that affect transportation, we fully understand that walk zones affect the transportation levels that the community is accustomed to, and the district seeks to take an incremental approach in considering these changes. Although the New York State Education Department allows districts to set a two-mile threshold for eligibility for K-12. for eligibility for K-18 students and a three-mile threshold for high school students, we recognize that this is not our recommended approach. We would have to be experiencing a significant shortage of drivers before we would even consider such a move. In reviewing these distances, we identified thresholds that would generate roughly the same number of affected students, since a single driver covers each of the grade levels on one bus route, to enable a reduction in routes. We would need to have a similar reduction in numbers of students across all levels. Although we looked at the half-mile threshold for elementary schools, first, it did not produce a significant reduction. Therefore, we considered a three-fourth mile threshold. We project that these changes would enable a reduction of approximately four to five bus routes. Not a total solution to the current driver shortage, but at least helping us improve the situation. Over the next several slides, we will be presenting a visual rendering of how the new zones would appear. These drafts take in consideration the unique characteristics of each neighborhood surrounding each school building location. We are working to enlarge these maps and add street names to all roads so it will be easy for the board and the community to see these areas, potentially, areas that are potentially ineligible for transportation. We have discussed concerns about Glenmont in our last meeting. Given the school's location in the commercial zone and with the volume of traffic on 9W, we are continuing to review the impacts and options for Glenmont, and we will update you at subsequent meetings, as well as cover any other updates to the draft presented this evening. So, right now, we have Eagle up, and I'll just continue to talk as we cycle through the slides. Each of these maps for the elementary schools use a point seven-five threshold. The middle school map uses a one-mile threshold, and the high school map uses a one-point-five mile threshold. The strict home-to-school distance measurements result in very arbitrary cutoffs that, in many cases, split within homes on single streets and split neighborhoods. These proposed maps have included slight adjustments to boundaries that would cause these odd splits and present, prevent concerns within a street or neighborhood. If a family's home is within the shaded area, the student would not be eligible for district transportation. The family would be responsible for getting their child to and from school. Again, by making these maps available in January, we hope to have ample time for the community to review and comment on these changes to help us attain an overall solution to our driver shortage. We clearly understand that this is not a preferred action for affected families. However, we believe it will provide the least impactful solution to help with the driver shortage. Additionally, this is incremental, incremental solution that keeps us well below the stage two and three mile thresholds for eligibility. We welcome public feedback on these changes in the coming months, and will continue to update the board and community as we formalize these zones. Ultimately, the board will need to approve a resolution to make these changes in the eligibility thresholds. The resolution will also need to include the legal ad adopted by the board in March. The propositions will require voter approval in May, seventeen board vote, budget vote, and will become effective for the 22, 23 school year. Is there any questions before I turn the presentation over to Dave?
On the, on the maps, sometimes in the shaded area, there's like some little light-green streets. Is there anything special about those?
No, ma'am. It's just the software that we use.
Okay. Do you have, not in the presentation, but somewhere, do we have, if we, it looked like we were using three-quarters of a mile for elementary school, do we have the number of riders that would be reduced if we only did a half a mile? And then, I'm going to have the same question on the high school side as well.
Don't have it in the presentation, but I do have it in the...
I think we're doing a half mile now.
I was asking about elementary.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We asked to do elementary at middle school at three-quarters, and then high school, where it was, to kind of get those, like a differential to know what the numbers were in the ridership.
And maybe you did that analysis, and it just didn't cut out enough riders. I'm just curious, the difference in ridership if we did a half a mile at elementary and a...
Half a mile at elementary, so at the half a mile, and these are the total in the communities, so we're looking at ten at Eagle, sixty-two at Elsmere, nine at Glenmont, forty-seven at Hamegrill, and thirty-eight at Swinlins.
It was, I don't know...
Did you write that down?
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't result in...
Yeah, so the middle school, it was reduced to three, it was at three-quarters of a mile?
No. Three-quarters of a mile. One second. Middle school at three-quarters of a mile would be a hundred and two students.
Yeah, so each one would be about a half.
Right.
Right, so that would be about half for each of those thus far.
Um, does it have...
Just real quick, in case anybody's following along at home, these maps, they can be found on the website with the agenda for tonight's meeting, so folks can start checking them out. And Mr. Johnson, you were saying that there's going to be more detailed maps coming soon.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, can you tell me how many less students we have in the district from 2019? So, we were talking about eighty-seven drivers back two years ago, and now we have fifty-nine, but how has enrollment been in regards to that, like in the number of students?
It's declined. I could look it up. I don't know if I can find it that quickly. I was gonna say, a hundred fifty, maybe two hundred at the most? A hundred fifty, maybe? Probably.
The projections are for slight declines in student numbers to the next three or four years.
And just to, just to clarify for my own sake, so...
Thank you.
And again, anybody following along, so, under the law, we could, without having to put it to a vote, we could just make it the New York State limit. Is that, that's correct? We could just make it two miles and three miles?
That is correct.
If we were in a really dire situation. But what we're trying to do here is have the, have a solution that is significantly less than that, but still gets us what we, what we need in order to be able to provide transportation to those that really, really need it.
How many routes does this take us down if we were to move forward, reducing ridership the way we've outlined?
So, we'll be looking at four to five, so we're currently running fifty-eight, so that will get us down into the fifty, fifty-three, fifty, fifty-four range.
Oh, this only reduces five routes with that many students?
Yes.
So, if we went with the, if we were just talking the other one, it was, it was like two-hundred and sixty-eight students. You'd only see a couple routes, right?
Yes, ma'am.
With that, but I just want to point out, with like the two miles, two miles, three miles, I mean, we wouldn't need half our bus driver fleet if we did that. So, I don't think that would be something we would actually look at.
It would be a significant reduction in buses.
And then, how far, I don't know, I don't quite know how to ask this question, but how far does reducing by five routes get us towards solving, solving the problem? At least, you know, does it, does it put us in just like a slightly more stable place? Do we feel like we're real confident we can run routes every day at that level? Like, where, I'm trying to get a handle on how much of a difference this makes.
So, by reducing the routes and our expected vacancies due to retirements, due to the age of our employee pool, we basically expect to be scratched with this change. So, we're probably going to lose four to five, and this reduction will get us down to four to five, so we would just be kind of where we are.
So, this just keeps us, so it keeps us treading water?
Yes.
I see.
Yeah.
But not, but not over our...
First, Christine, to answer your question on, you asked enrollment difference between eighteen, nineteen?
Well, you said two years ago, we had eighty-seven bus drivers, so I was just wondering...
And projected for next year, it's just under three hundred less kids.
Okay. So, that's quite a bit of students on the bus, so...
And middle and high school have the largest projected decrease next year, and elementary's up a little bit.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
But even with that, with our retire, even, even with the changes, and even with, with, if, if we were to adopt this, if the community were to adopt this, we're still just a quarter.
Now, we're hoping with the compensation increases that we will get...
Right.
...boys in.
Great.
If we have a surge in hiring, we might need to reverse.
Right.
But I don't think that's going to happen realistically.
Right.
So, we really need the hiring to happen, to fill the hole from drivers who are retiring, and then the reduction in their routes.
Got it. Thank you.
Wasn't sure if anybody wanted to look at the maps sort of individually or had questions about them.
All I can say is, like, I wouldn't want us to jump the gun. Obviously, we see that there's a shortage, and the labor market shows that for everybody looking for a job, there's a job and a half that they can choose from. So, it's a labor market, you know, for people looking for jobs. But at the same time, I don't feel, when we're trying to start school later for high schoolers, to increase their walking time to a mile and a half doesn't make sense because then they're not getting to school later, they're just going to be walking. And going from zero to three-quarters of a mile for elementary schools, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I don't know how well-received that will be in the community. So, maybe we do it gradually, even though it's not going to be as significant of a change that we're looking for with the half a mile for the elementary, because I do think we should have a walking distance for elementary and maybe three-quarters for the middle school, or maybe up to a mile for them, if that would make even like a two or three bus route difference, even though it's not exactly what we're looking for, it might be just enough to get us over the hump.
Well, I think the difference here is between like wants and needs, right? Like, what do we want and what do we need? If, does this, I, I'm with Christine in the sentiment that we don't want to make any big adjustments if we don't need them, so I agree totally with that. And what I think I'm hearing from Judy and Mr. Johnson is, is that this keeps us afloat, that this, that this meets a need based on current projections and isn't stretching.
I mean, it's also, it's hard to know, to Christine's point, with the labor market...
Yeah.
Where's that going to go? So, you're trying to...
Be ahead of it.
Be ahead of it.
Yeah.
Also, not knowing, we could get more drivers than we're anticipating, but we could get...
We might not.
We could not, and we could have more people retire, so it's trying to make our best...
But right now, we are making it kind of work. We're not canceling bus routes like other schools, so we're not that dire.
Don't say that too loud.
I know. It's not optimal, it's not optimal, but it's not dire. So, we're making it work now, and so by changing the two walking distance, we're going to see at least a couple routes. It's going to add some value. And if we're not dire, it's still adding to it, and we can see how it goes next year, and then reconvene before we're making high schoolers walk a mile and a half when we're trying to start them later.
So, you have to remember that the eligibility piece, you can change to two and three miles with no vote, but anything less has to be a vote.
Correct.
So, whatever the change could be, that's what it would be all next year.
Right. We can't, but we made it work this year.
Yeah, no.
So, I, I don't see how next year it wouldn't work again.
Assuming, you're assuming a stable, that the market doesn't change from what it is now. And if the market changes and becomes more negative, in other words, we can't hire as many drivers, then we're going to be in a worse situation, we'll have had a vote, but it will not help us because we won't have the drivers to fulfill what that vote is for, and we will have to go to the New York State limit, which is, I think everyone would say is burdensome, at two miles for elementary and middle school and three miles for high school.
I don't think we'd ever bump to that because we'd have to lay off half our bus driver fleet, so that would never, I don't see that, our district ever doing that. I mean, we can say it, but I don't ever see it happening.
You may not see it happening, but it's not up to us, it's up to the number of drivers we can get.
Right.
And if the, if we can get the number of drivers, we're fine. If we can't, we need an option that doesn't require us to spend a year possibly canceling rides and waiting for another vote a year later.
I, I don't see the district being any different than it's been for the last twenty years. The parents do step up, they have stepped up.
So, I just have one question about the, the eligibility numbers. So, if we change the eligibility at the elementary school and the middle school, but left the high school at one mile, what does that do to the number of routes that are saved or eliminated?
Because buses are triple-tiered, they do in elementary, middle, and high school, if you're not able to eliminate runs at each level, you would still have to run the bus.
Okay. Thank you.
But we're doing that now, right?
Do every, every driver pretty much have three routes right now?
The majority has three routes. We do have some variations, but the majority of our system is triple-tiered.
And then, the other thing to keep in mind, too, is I don't think we need to necessarily discuss worst, or most extreme scenarios, either two, three miles versus, you know, what we have now, because if we cannot provide predictability, if we get to next year and we're in a situation, like other districts, where today we can run a bus and tomorrow we cannot run a bus, that is worse than saying in September, or, excuse me, far earlier than September, it's worse than saying in May, here's what we need to plan for, and here's what's coming down the road. And so, by, by adopting a model that, you know, may be a little bit, I mean, hopefully, right? Goodness willing, is a little bit more than we need, it allows us to plan, and allows parents to plan.
Could we adopt what you have up there and then modify it, should? Because what I don't want to see is we modify it and we just do it to make it, you know, easier for everything for us, and it's, you know, putting stress on parents or students as well. If we see the number of bus drivers increase, are, is everybody agreeable that we would adjust those numbers?
You mean less than it, go back?
Yeah, yeah, less than it.
You have to go back out for a vote.
You have to go back out to a vote, see? So, is there any way to get information of how many bus runs, if you, the two-hundred-and-sixty-eight students? Do we know from elementary, middle school, if it's a half a mile, three-quarters of a mile, how many bus runs that that would affect? Because it sounds like bell times could also, changing the bell time just slightly could accommodate it a little bit better, too.
No, the bell times won't change this. All it does is it allows more time, which is the other issue of getting more time to transition between levels. It's not going to change the number of routes necessarily.
With two-hundred-and-sixty-eight students, do you know how many bus routes would be affected with half a mile and three-quarters of a mile and not affecting the high school?
I would have to get back with you. I would have to project that out.
Because if it's four to five with these changes, I'm curious what it would be with the two-hundred-and-sixty-eight.
If you're not changing the high school, you're still going to have a tier there.
No, I know. I know.
Wouldn't we do that?
But I, I would like to know how many bus runs it would be, like, is it two or three compared to four or five? It just would be helpful.
The overall, the overall concept is, if you have remaining routes at tiers, which is the issue that we faced at the beginning of the school year, where we had an influx of high school ridership, even though that was at one tier, it added ten buses. So... So, it's the same concept. If we can't reduce evenly at each tier, you're still gonna have to run the bus, which requires a driver.
No, yeah, I understand that. But we're doing it now. So, how are we doing it now and why can't we do it next year if we're doing it now? If, if all things constant, number of bus drivers is the same?
Then we're depending on the labor market to produce the adequate a number of drivers to accom, to compensate for the, the estimated drivers that we're gonna lose at the end of the year?
You said it was, it was a wash, so we expect the retirees and.
If we reduce the number of runs, it's gonna equal the reduction in drivers.
So, we would need the labor market to produce X amount of drivers, and at this particular time, you know, that, I wouldn't make that bet.
Cause we don't, we don't.
My professional opinion.
We don't wanna be even, we would like to have extra drivers.
Extra. We would, to have an efficient transportation system, we would need to at least have about ten percent in reserve.
Okay. All right.
I, I, I have to step up to the mic here. So, we're talking about how it's not dire and how everything is working so wonderfully this year. Karim has done an amazing job covering. Every day, we have a good number of drivers who are unable to work, and we are covering that. They're putting mechanics out on the road, so it is not easy to cover it and maintain the services that we have been doing for this school year. And again, to Jody's point, this is a long-term problem, and each step that we take is gonna give us just a small piece of making it more manageable. It's difficult to become qualified as a driver, people are just not flocking to that as a career. So, even though it's, it's a good time to find a job, this type of a position doesn't draw in a ton of applicants. You've got drug testing associated with it, you've got lengthy training and retraining, you've got the split schedules, even with the six hours a day, it's not typically full employment. So, transportation is doing an amazing job this year, getting kids to and from school, but I don't think you would call it easy, Karim.
No, not necessarily easy, I could say optimal, but I know it's a tough job. I give you guys a lot of credit for everything that you've done this year. I know absolutely that you're working really hard and it hasn't been easy. So, in no way am I insinuating that it's a great situation. I just, you know, it's a balancing act for, you know, staff and parents and students. So, you know, what could we do? I'm just trying to think of all options out loud.
I just wanted to emphasize what, what Judy just said about it, it is a dire situation because the situation in other school districts that we're comparing ourselves to and saying that, well, at least that's not happening here, that's bus routes being completely canceled, you know, the morning of, and that's something that's like, just not at all acceptable.
Yeah.
So, we have to view ourselves as this is a dire situation because we are teetering on the edge of unacceptable. So, I don't wanna be anywhere near teetering on the edge. We do need to make big changes, and the next change that we're gonna be talking about is a huge change, which is bell time. This isn't as big of a change. I understand it's a big change for the families who are affected, but it is not as big of a change as the next thing we're discussing. So, I just wanted to be clear that I do feel like this is a dire situation. I did have one question about the, the maps, specifically the Elsmere map, and it is tough to really understand this map. I think I understand where I am, but it doesn't look.
For me to point out?
Yeah, like, I think I know where the school is.
Is it in the middle?
This is the school.
Yes, yes.
It's at Elsmere.
Right. And it, it doesn't look like if you're going down, that does not look like three-quarters of a mile to me.
You're, you're getting a bus where you are.
No, I, I'm not talking about my specific neighborhood, but I'm, I'm just saying, it doesn't look like there's a half mile down from, or three-quarters of a mile down from that.
That is the person who lives at the edge of that?
Who is getting a bus?
I'm on it, I'm on it.
I, I can see where you are.
Well, once again, we adjusted the maps based upon several factors. Maybe trying not to split neighborhoods, looking at the
Okay.
Sidebar, looking at crossing guards. So, we did make some adjustments. So, that's why it may not look like that is the same in all directions.
Okay. Thank you.
So, it sounds like this is the best route for the next couple of years to, possibly until it turns around, and then we could relook at it, revisit it, if it changes.
And the, the number of riders that you identified, I think I asked this last time and I just can't remember, those are just what would be eligible riders, but not necessarily families that are currently riding that are going to lose eligibility? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, Christine, is that you could propose this and go out to vote with each of these, and the next, assess it in next year. If something is problematic, you can make a change. I mean, obviously, you don't wanna be changing this all the time.
No, no.
But I think, given the situation, you could evaluate it in next year if you wanted to make a change with one of the levels. There's no reason why you can't go back out with a vote again.
Well, it would just, it would coincide with the budget vote, so it would be around the same time, but it would still give us a two-year cushion, even if we were doing something next year. We could look at it in a couple of years, just to make sure that it doesn't become more dire than it already is.
I mean, it's kinda crazy you have to go back out to a vote to lessen it, but, you know.
Yeah, and it may be fine, cause a lot of parents already bring, you know, I was far enough away, I was outside the mile and a half, and I drove my kids every day, so it didn't matter. But it's just, I, I'm just trying to be conscientious of the parents for both walking distance and bell times, just to, you know, think about all aspects of it, not just, you know, say yes, just, you know, challenge everything and see if, you know, if something else pops up.
Would there be any value in soliciting any community feedback on the maps in advance of?
Yeah, we could finalize it or something to get some feedback on the maps. Not sure what that would look like, but we could probably figure something out.
Where is the middle school in that picture? I'm so confused.
Can you see the arrow?
So, where is?
It's the round that I have popped out there.
It's right there.
So, Delaware Avenue is like the.
To the, this way.
The top one?
Yeah.
That's St. Thomas.
Kenwood.
Okay.
And that's Delaware.
And then Elsmere's there.
So, it mostly goes this way.
Wow.
The maps are really helpful, I appreciate the, the visuals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The maps don't make it seem as bad as what I.
Right.
And I think too. So visually, it looks good.
That's why, I, I feel like if there's a way that we could figure out to try to get some feedback from the people that are, really that are going to be affected by any change, just in case there's something that, you know, we haven't even considered, you know, is there, is there some issue that we're not aware of?
Yeah, I'm sure we could figure out a way to get some feedback.
And I think it'd just be important, too, as we're having these, these conversations, to put more emphasis on the maps themselves than on the distances in those first charts because as, as you referenced, there, there are slight deviations, it's not, it does not seem like it's exactly in every situation.
That's great. Thank you for putting the work together and looking at the safety aspects of it. This is helpful.
Okay. There's no other questions, I'll turn it over to Dave.
And then, Dr. Rose, before you get started, as we're talking about this, we're talking about potential, we're talking about going out to voters with the bus route changes in, for, you know, in this year. And at the first slide that I see, we're talking about this for the subsequent year?
Correct. So, as Judy mentioned in the onset, the driver compensation changes are taking effect now. The proposed walking distance would be for next school year, and then the bell times would not be until the following school year, and there's some sort of reasons behind that. First and foremost, we have some variables that we had to consider, these are what I presented back in November, and we did the initial conversation on this, and I presented six different scheduling models and talked about the different challenges each one possessed. First off, with the length of instructional day, so there are SEV requirements around that, there are also contractual obligations. So, any change to the teacher day would require changes to our contract. We also have the, the bus turnaround time, which is, you recall, that's why when we started the school year with our two-tiered system, we did not have enough buses to make things work, so we moved to the three-tiered system. But one of the main challenges is there, is we do not have forty-five-minute turnaround time, which is why at the end of the day, for instance, we have a handful of buses, it's a real stretch for them to get to the elementary schools at the time students are being dismissed. So, forty-five minutes really is the optimal time in order to make sure that we have adequate time to get from one tier to the next. We also know that reasonable start man times is a consideration. We had, you know, start school later committee that convened for over a year and devised the new high school schedule, which we had to deviate from this year. So, that is something obviously we want to respect and honor, is that aligns with our wellness goals and with obviously that committee's findings. So, I'm gonna present three sort of models. These are just brief variations of the ones that were presented back in November. Obviously, the idea is either the high school can go first, the middle school, or the elementary school. Each presents different advantages and different challenges. Obviously, the high school going first, followed by middle, followed by elementary, that's essentially the model we're using right now. Some slight modifications were made to it to try to get as close to the forty-five minutes as we could. Obviously, the, the biggest challenge here is even though it may work, it's tight on our buses, but we could probably make it work, is that this does not at all honor the start school later concept that came out of that committee, and so this would sort of maintain what we're doing right now, long-term, which I don't believe is the goal of that committee. So, that is obviously the one drawback to this model, is that it does not push the high school's start time back. Second option would be for the middle school to go first, which is essentially the model we're using now, just flipping the middle and the high school times. Again, transportation-wise, this is, is doable. So, a couple of issues, though, that we have with this model. One, the high school ending much later presents, you know, some challenges, but we were able to deal with those this year, just pushing sports back a little bit later and extracurriculars. It does shrink the amount of time students have with teachers after school, but we've made that manageable this year as well. But again, going back to the start school later, you know, if, you know, if you're saying that ninth graders can't start school till eight-thirty, well, is the ideal time, right? And we're, we've sort of conceded that eight o'clock is the best we could do. So, if ninth graders, then, then why is it okay for seventh and eighth graders, when essentially we have eighth graders that are the same age, if not older than some ninth graders? So, if age is the overall consideration, is it really makes sense for the middle school to go first? And also, looking at most districts, typically, either the high school goes first or elementary, it's very rare to see a school or middle school is actually the one that goes first. So, I just don't believe that this, while it would work, again, I'm not sure that it fits the overall wellness goal in that now you've got eighth graders starting early, whereas you've said ninth graders can't, when essentially it's the same age group. So, I think you're still presenting with some of the same challenges there. The final model, which actually we've seen quite a bit of positive feedback on, is having the elementary go first. This is against several other area districts utilize this model. I think there's still some tweaks that would be needed with this one, that might be a little bit early of a start, but it does accomplish the high school starting later. Some of the positive feedback we found from elementary parents is that while, yes, the early start is sort of a shock from what it is now, they wouldn't, the parents would not necessarily be fighting to find childcare before and after school, it would really only be after school now. So, there are some, for some, they saw that as a benefit, others saw it as a benefit of, again, just having their students home earlier and able to do some after-school activities. It provides some enrichment time as opposed to getting out later and basically going, pushing so close to dinnertime. So, I think, you know, in all, this model is the, the most drastic deviation from the contract, which again is why these are things that we necessarily wouldn't be able to implement last, next year. And also for families, right? Most families right now are making their plans for daycare arrangements, you kinda have to lock into your contracts now. So, for us in, you know, what, March, if, if that's when we could finally get this finalized, to be telling families, oh, by the way, instead of having your students have to get on the bus at, for a nine o'clock arrival, they're gonna be getting on for a seven-twenty-five arrival, that's a drastic deviation from what they planned for, and depending on their childcare arrangements, that could be something that would totally not work. So, that's the reason it really needs to be pushed out the additional year, is to give us time to really think these things through a little bit more, to be able to get an accurate proposal out in that February, March timeframe, so that we can then really begin to iron out the details, so that in the fall, we can kind of make an announcement, so that when it comes time for families to make all of those arrangements, they have ample time to make sure that they're set up to be able to make that successful. So, I'm not sure, you know, again, where we're gonna land, A, B, or C in the end, but if we were to land on either B or C, right, those are changes to both contractual obligations, but also for families, right? So, to just throw at a family towards the end of the school year, oh, by the way, your child's time is going to start next year, knowing that that has significant childcare implications, that's the reason for the extra year. So, as much as having high school go early for one more year goes against sort of what the committee had found, there's just no way we could pull off making a drastic change in September without really upsetting people's childcare issues.
So, kind of along the same vein as what I was saying before, but I feel like even more so with the bell times, I'd love it if we could solicit some
For sure.
Community feedback
Yep.
On these, especially given both the childcare component of it and the extracurricular activity piece of it.
Did you consider in this middle school scenario, Model C, like, how many students play JV sports or modified, and how they would miss instructional time?
There's several other schools
Right.
Their middle school starts later, they generally start their competitions later.
Right.
They just make those adjustments in the league.
Do you have, can you send a list or present it at a different time of the suburban schools and?
There are times?
There are times, I know like
We have those.
Farnsworth goes before their high school and Gilderland. I don't know of other schools.
Quite a few. Yeah, we have.
Yeah. I mean, I personally like the middle school model going first. I think with people who have middle school children or high school children that watch the younger students, which I think a lot of families do utilize, I, I think Model C is just not going to work. That's just my personal thought of people in the community. But like Holly said, to solicit the feedback to really know, we need a really good population to know that.
No, I agree, because initially, I had similar thoughts that the middle school going first, just kinda flip-flopping those two seemed at least drastic, but in speaking with, our last meeting with President's Council, and then in speaking with some other, both faculty here who have students that, like, say Gilderland, who their elementary does start very early, and some other parents, the elementary going first was not as negative an option as I originally thought it was. So, we definitely are going to need to seek feedback from a wide variety of
Yeah.
Parents, for sure.
Cause I definitely think with people with multiple kids, getting them ready for seven-fifteen, I would've had to get up.
And like I said, these times are not, these times are not set in stone, this was just to make sure that we had the forty-five-minute turnaround for the buses and try to fit it within parameters that would work for teacher contractual language, and to, cause, don't forget, the teacher day's seven and a half hours, the student day's anywhere between, let's say, six and six and a half hours, depending on level. So, you have to make sure that the ends on that work within the transportation model, too.
We haven't always had forty-five-minute turnaround time, though, right? No, so if we
Right, but we have.
That's optimal. I'm going back to the optimal, if we had to do like forty minutes.
So, that's essentially what we're trying to do now, and we have four to five runs at the elementary level that arrive late?
Yeah.
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 It's not the worst thing, though.
The, the issue is, is that the elementary runs are, are arriving after dismissal.
How late are they, how late are they arriving?
Five to ten minutes after dismissal.
Okay.
Which is impacting the, um, teacher contract.
But look, could we push out, if it's a problem next year, could you push out the start? the start time of elementary to make that work? If that's where the issue lies?
Well, so that's where we're running the teacher contractual day issues, right? So right now, the teacher contractual day and the dismissal are pretty well aligned, right? So by buses arriving 10 minutes late, you're already pushing past the teacher end day. So...
Is it a time or is it hours? So if you made their start time 10 minutes later...
Right, so that's where, again, yeah, that's, now you're into contractual, where you have to negotiate.
I thought it was the number of hours per day. It's the actual time?
It's both.
It's the number of hours per day, but if we change the day, it's required negotiation.
Catherine, did you have a...
I did. I was just wondering on process here. So this is, this is a more refined, so this is the second presentation, a more refined version, and thank you, I know none of this is, is easy. So after, after this, I mean, we're talking about it this evening, can somebody just talk through process from here? We're talking about getting, soliciting community feedback, and then when does a vote come up? How do we, how do we move forward?
So, so there's a few things. So the contractual piece, obviously, we would work with the Teachers Association on what that looks like. They do require with some of these changes, which are quite significant. It would require a vote also by their membership. I think once we get, you know, these are times here based on 45 minutes, but they can be tweaked a little bit. I think what we would want to do is put these options out for community feedback, so they have a specific model to look at.
Absolutely.
What are the pluses? You know, what, what's the challenge for you? What's a benefit for you? And try and weigh that out.
And then would there be a board vote that would then direct the administration to go into negotiations?
Well, we'll come back with, you know, instead of three models, there might be two models.
Yeah.
And see if every, I think everyone said, we really want to get the high school to 8 o'clock, so obviously, that's a priority. So we would try and work with that as kind of a big guiding principle, and come back with a couple of models, that here's what we're thinking, here's what we'll work contractually, this is the feedback we've had from the community, so you could hear that and move forward with it.
Thank you.
And we're soliciting staff feedback as well, and when you say community?
Right.
I'm curious about that, to see what their perspective is.
Other questions?
And thank you. I think, I think the robust community outreach would be great. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors with us tonight who'd like to speak on an agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through nine.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I only see eight.
There was one additional added after the copy you have was printed.
Oh, okay.
There's these two, it's right there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one and three through 17.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have anyone with us who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, now is the time. Item eight, future meetings and events. Our next regular board meeting is on Wednesday, January 19th, anticipating executive session at 6:00, and the rest of the meeting's starting at 7:00. And on Monday, January 24th, at 6:00 PM, we have a policy committee meeting.
Holly, have we talked to any elementary schools about bringing students or sending students for elementary reports, the way we've been doing with the middle school?
I know we had mentioned that. I wasn't, was, hadn't followed up with you yet on that.
We talked about it in a principal's meeting, and they were coming up with a schedule. Did they, Brittany, did the principals get in touch with you about, so they were going to do that and get in touch with Brittany about it?
Super. Thank you for the reminder. I don't think we have a need to go back into executive session.
We can talk about it next.
Okay. Could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.